Call order this meeting of the Board of Trustees, Redford Township, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as your Honorable Clerk Christie gives the invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
So make sure mics are down so everybody can hear. Okay Clerk Christie, roll please.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
For Mr. President, next is the approval of the agenda.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
The move that we've proposed in the agenda. To the board.
Board back to the Treasurer Kavanaugh. Any questions? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Next we have some citizen comments. First up is Michael Van Tol.
Thank you so much. My name's Michael Van Tol, Legislative Aid to Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. Thank you Superintendent Supervisor Pat McCray. Thank you to the familiar and friendly faces of the Redford Board of Trustees. Commissioner McCormick was delighted and proud to be at the recent groundbreaking for the Redford Rec Center. Along with other major funders, Wayne County appropriated $6.5 million to the project. The Wayne County Commission Youth Council is accepting applications for the next school year. The Youth Commission is open to Wayne County High School students representing all 15 Commission districts. And if you'd like to get an application, the number to call is 313-224-0884. That number again is 313-224-0884. The Wayne County Health Choice is offering small businesses affordable health care. If you started a business this year, Wayne County is offering the first three months free in order to help small business startups. There are two Wayne County ballot initiatives on August 6th. Voters are being asked to renew Wayne County Parks funding. And also voters are being asked to amend the county charter by allowing qualified audit firms to be awarded a contract with the county and to eliminate the eight-year limit requirement for independent external auditors. Finally, the Commissioner was reappointed to the Wayne County Port Authority this summer and also appointed to the Legislative Task Force for SEMCOG. That concludes my report for District 6. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Michael Dennis.
I am here tonight on behalf of the Redford Festival Committee. As the Chairman of the Committee, I wanted to just bring a quick report to the Board as well as to the audience. We held our Township Festival a week ago and our festival, or fireworks, excuse me. And we had pretty good weather. It wasn't, it was at least before it hit 90s. We had a lot of hard work putting it together as we do each year. Our Festival Committee did a great job. I want to thank them for all the hard work that they do place on their volunteerism here. And again Kathy Anderson, Kim Barrow, Melissa Garrett, Edra Hope, Nancy McLean, Roger Walker. I'm missing somebody for Pete's sake.
Michael Dennis.
Myself and, and, and. Elise, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. And they all did a great job. I was running it down in the way. I apologize. So it was a lot of fun. We had wonderful weather. The fireworks is always our grand part on the Friday. It's kind of a kickstart for the summer. School ends, families are out there on Friday, Saturday. We had a very good turnout with our Family Day, petting zoo. We had all the rides, bouncies, crafts, kites. And then Sunday was our Father's Day and we had more crafts, face painting. We had the Redford Dance Program out on Saturday. The entertainment was great. We didn't have any trouble. A lot of smiles. We had also our Keep on Trucking event on Sunday. I want to give a big shout out to our sponsors. If it wasn't for them, we can't do this. There is no Township funds that are allocated toward our Township Festival. And we had three platinum sponsorships this year. We've never had three platinum sponsorships before. And I want to thank Detroit Diesel, which was a festival sponsor. Maddick Chevrolet, which was also a festival sponsor. And Redford Cement Company, which stepped up and was our fireworks sponsor. Again, we've never had three companies that were platinum sponsorships. We had a large amount of gold sponsorships this year, ranging from Benish, Bitigary, the Redford DDA. And then we also had Way Trim, Frank Riewald and Sons, Red Medals, GFL, Commission Youth and Family, just to name a few. If it wasn't for these sponsorships, this event would not go on. So I just want to say it was another great event. Our 34th year, if I recall, we've been doing this at Bell Creek. Look forward to year 35 next year. And again, all the hard work. We do have Oktoberfest in September here in Town Hall, which is the third weekend in September. And obviously we have old fashioned holidays, the first Thursday in December. So big thanks to everyone who stepped up helping out and look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leah Garrett.
I just wanted to suggest that we have the, any new candidates or returning candidates, trustees, et cetera, come to a board meeting so that we can meet them before the election.
Thank you. That's all of our citizen comments. Next Chief Mansfield. I'm putting Chief Mansfield to take in a privilege because she's going to make an announcement for some people that weren't able to be at the event today.
Good evening, Honorable Board. I just come before you today to discuss our Coffee with a Cop program that we had this morning. I was very excited about this particular one. They reached out to me as compared to us reaching out to the various restaurants. The McDonald's right up at Five Mile and Telegraph, they're under new ownership and new management. And they were very excited to go to the Township, our police officers, as well as some of the elected officials. They were very hospitable. There's a good word for you guys. Hospitable today. And if you haven't been in there, it's remodel. It's really nice. So I'd like to encourage you to visit. But on top of everything else that they did for us, they also donated $500 towards our National Night Out program. So we're very excited and I wanted to make sure that the Board had that. And just if I may, sir, a little plug. Our National Night Out is already scheduled for August 17th. So that's a Saturday, August 17th, and we will be at the Community Center yet again. So watch for more details. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Next is the Departmental Report, Director Dennis. Just stand there. Do you want to shorten your mic?
Thanks, Adam. I am sharing you tonight a presentation for the water, for DPS for the Water and Sewer Division. Wanted to share some highlights with you, just information regarding what has occurred in the last 12 months. First and foremost, I want to thank our Water Superintendent Tom Rowland, our Water Foreman Sean Sinkfield, and our staff for doing just a hell of a job for the last 12 months. We've had some challenges, as you all know, over the last year. And we've been working just full time regarding some things. Obviously the CSO Basin's taken a lot of our time on the planning. So I want to thank both of them for all their hard work. And some good news that started off was that we were fully staffed up until about two weeks ago. We haven't been fully staffed in two years. So it was great. So we are out, we are hiring right now for a utility worker. So anybody who's looking for a career, we are hiring a new employee. Just so everyone realizes, our Water and Sewer Department is made up of our Water Superintendent, our Water Foreman, Utility Operator, three, we have two employees, Utility Worker, two, we have 12, and five Account Clerks. Just to start off, and I'm just going to touch base, I'm not going to go through everything. There's four pages here. I'm not going to bore you. That's why you're here to have it here, to read it. This past year, calendar year, how we keep these, we did have 70 water main breaks throughout the calendar year, which is winter to fall to winter. But 34 of those, again, were through our, we like to say our water main event. I don't like to use the other word. It jinxes us. So we did have 34 in that one week. And again, I will say that was due to a malfunction on our water inlet on Eight Mile. We had a malfunction and then we had to make some corrections. So it just kind of grew through that week. We learned a lot from that, working with Great Lakes Water. And we've put together some plans now and our opinion is it will never occur again. We've put processes in place, policies, procedures. That capital, which you only had a couple of years worth, the capital report, I will tell you, is that we have one of our PRV valves. We have three of them annually, being checked annually every three years. They're usually three to five years. It will be checked every three years now. So that will not happen again because we do not want to work what we did for that eight days back about six months ago. So. Also, just to touch base a little bit, as it was advertised out there, that we do have the action level exceedance for lead. We did have one home back in October that tested positive. And we did a filter distribution event back in November 23. And we continue to provide filters, pitchers, and refill cartridges to eligible residents. And those are available at the Public Service Building. There is a eligibility. We went through all that back on households that are on Medicaid, have teens or young folks on Medicaid also. We have been, there is a whole website. There's a whole section on our website educating our residents on potential lead hazards. One thing that I will stress and I try to stress every time is, if you have not called the Redford Water Department, please do to see what's, what your water service line is, if it's copper, lead, galvanized. We are taking a assessment. It's for free. It's a service order. So we can calculate what's going on out there. So we are actively working on it every day. I can tell you, Tom, I think Eagle comes out with a new report every 30 days. Tom is constantly doing reports through the state. And we are, and all the information that is needed is on the Township website. Tom also recently did complete our CCR Consumer Conference Report. It should be mailed out to most, to all of our water customers within the next probably 10 days. That'll be for the 2023 Consumer Conference Report. There is a section here that I really wanted to talk about. We talked earlier in our study session. It's special funding opportunities. We've been really diligent over the last year trying to locate grant opportunities, funding opportunities for CSO projects, potential lead line investigation, verification, and replacement. So just a couple of highlights I had on here for the handout was currently, we are in Phase One. We're finishing Phase One. We're using ARPA funds for lead service line replacements. Out of about 160, 165 households, we have about 25 left. We're having a hard time getting some residents that want to replace their lead service line. They don't want to have us on their property or inside their homes. So we're trying to get into properties. We have also received a federal award of $1 million from Representative Taleb's office for fiscal year '24 that will help us replace identified lead service lines, where hopefully that will, we'll use that money into a Phase Two project. We are also recently awarded, we applied and were awarded a $542,000 grant from Eagle. And that is going to be, and that was recently in front of the Board. And there was a bid going out for this work on Thursday to verify potential lead service lines. They'll do pot-hauling and we have this randomizer and they're having homes between 1900 and 1949. And so we'll be starting that work hopefully in the fall. And recently we have applied for, it was brought up earlier too, about dwarf funds for $10 million and $2 million from the state. And then we've also applied for $5 million from Senator Stavinaugh and Senator Peters' office for the CSO Basin. And $2 million each for potential lead service line replacements, as well as $2 million from Representative Taleb's office for also, for $2 million. We were also informed earlier today that Senator Kavanaugh is working on funding from the state. I was just, just received a text in regards to it would be funds for the CSO Basin and for lead service line replacement. I have the details. Those will come out from her. But I think, big thanks to Senator Kavanaugh for working for us up in Lansing. I just want to give you, just touch base, a couple of current proposed capital improvements. List about eight down here. We have a handful of water main proposed and currently starting. Later tonight, we'll be hopefully approving a bid to do some water main replacement at Five Mile at Bell Creek Park. Lead service line for Phase One and Phase Two. We did talk about the MIU Project, the Meter Interface Unit Replacement Project, which for the, for the audience here, is the unit outside your house that sends out the reading of your usage of your, of your water meters. And that'll be over a three-year project. And we are also tonight, in front of the Board, we talking about a North, our North CSO Basin, doing a project for Brains Electrical and Skata work, which we've been working on as well. So we constantly work on our current CSO basin as well. I'm not going to touch base much on the current CSO project. That's all going to come out. But bids were released in May. Our sealed bids will be due July 11th on a Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Reason we ask for 10:00 a.m. is because it gives us a half a day more to work on these because as the Board, Supervisor, and Adam knows, the state of Michigan is giving no leeway on a schedule. Zero. When they say that they need something by July 8th, they mean July 8th. On the funding, the allocations, the bonding. They want something from us on the bids. Our bids aren't due till July 11th. They want something on the 9th. Well, we can't do it. The bids are due on the 11th. They have a timeline and a milestone schedule that they're just not budging at all. So we're going to be probably coming back to the Board, hey, we got to meet, got to meet, got to meet. Because Eagle is pushing the gas pedal to get this project moving. So, but again, I want to thank Way Trim. They did one hell of a job on this project. They usually take 18 months. They designed the CSO Central project in eight months. They, I can't tell you enough, just the stuff that Tom, myself, and Sean have learned doing this project. It's going to be a very, very big project for us over a two to three-year period, starting probably January. Lastly, I'm just going to just finish up on just public services. Just because we're talking about water and sewer, but I'm going to say what's going on here just real fast. Tonight, we're going to talk about solid waste. I won't touch back because we'll be talking about it a little bit. I want to thank on the public service side, Wayne County Parks. We had a log jam in the Terabuse Creek. I may have brought up a little bit earlier. But back in September, Wayne County Parks assisted us that there was a log jam east of Western Golf Course you could see from Google Earth. It was on a curb. You couldn't get through. It was mammoth. And the county came through. We got them in access and brought in equipment over a month period of time and moved all the wood out of the creek. And really, really big thanks to the county. If it wasn't for them, they, we would have had to take some other avenues to get this done. So I really, really want to thank them. And then road projects, just so there's some questions. The Inkster, the Five Mile Road Bridge Project has been delayed again. The county just isn't moving real fast on it. They were supposed to be broken down initially July 1st and they haven't been done yet. So the county is just, I don't know what's going on with them. The traffic signals at Beach Daily and West Chicago, or Five Mile Beach and Five West Chicago. The county's waiting for, there's a power supply issue, something with DTE to get the lights at West Chicago. That's why they're pinned up until they get those done. And then they can't do second restoration until all the lights are done. So that's one big reason why if people do ask why those projects are sitting still because the county can't move forward until they get the next step done. Lastly, they're going to be paving Inkster Road from Joy to West Chicago in the half a mile this year in the late summer, early fall. And they're going from West Chicago to School Craft in 2025. They're doing that a mile and a half. So other than that, that's what I got.
To the Chair. I know, if you can, just a snippet. For people that haven't tuned in to our meetings, can you tell the residents what the service line is and the water testing? It's not on our side. Can you define it a little bit so people know what you're talking about?
Yes. In regards to the action level exceedance for the lead service lines, I'll just say a water service line itself. These issues would be on the private side. There is, and just so in case people at home in the audience, there is literature on this and there's, I think it's, I always think how the trustees think. There is a diagram, in case you ask questions tonight. There is a diagram here that talks about source of lead in drinking water. And talks about your water line that comes into our water, our water main. When it leaves our water main, the shut-off goes in. That's the water service line going into the home. And that's where, when the home was built, 1920, 40, 1950, whoever built the home on private property is, that could be the issue. It's if it's sitting stagnant for a while, the home is vacant, things of that nature. If the home is always being used, it's really, it's not a huge issue. People live with lead. It's in your faucets currently. I mean, they still make lead in faucets. Lead is in products. It's the, it's the amount that sits there, the testing. So it's on private property. You know, you can actually get filters. If you, if you have the new fangled ones that pull down, you can't get a faucet there. As you get a pitcher, you have the old school faucets, then you just put the filter on it. But there is a nice drawing from the state, sources of lead in drinking water. And it shows you the pipe coming in. My light might pass so I can see better. Where the water main is, where the water meter is going into the home and the current, where it's IDed at. But that's, but we would do pot-hauling in regards to testing from that area outside the home, where the shut-off, everything in the box is. And that's what we do, our pot-hauling. You can see through. We have to do a three-point verification. And so that's, that's what we'll be doing with this grant that we have that will be starting in the fall. So that's, that's in a nutshell.
Thank you.
And just call, just call Water Department. It's free. Just come out, look at it. You can tell. Yes, they do.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
How does 70 water main breaks compare to previous years?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear what you said.
How does 70 water main breaks compare to prior years?
No, 34 of those were the one week. So we had 36, which is average.
Average.
Yep, yep, yeah. I just did the whole thing because it was the whole thing. But I just, that's why I broke it down. There was 34 in that one week. So that normally would not happen.
And you told them that we needed a utility worker. Can you let everybody know what the requirements are to be a utility worker?
Derek? You, you work on water main breaks, you work on sewer calls.
Not the duties, the requirements to be hired.
Oh, no, you don't need a college degree. No. Derek, come on up. I mean, I don't know off the top of my head.
Thank you for allowing me to present this evening, Honorable Board. The main thing that a utility worker would need is a CDL. You know, normally if the person's a laborer and they have experience where they're working, you know, within, in a labor capacity, that as long, and they have a CDL, they normally qualify. And so our, the actual qualifications are on our website at www.reffordtp.com. And then you can go to the employment page and the actual job posting is posted for any, anybody who's interested in employment with the Township.
Thank you. To the Chair.
But I do want to add, it's not, I think until Thursday, and it's internally. So it's not till Thursday. And you don't, you don't have to have a CDL. We will give you time to train you. It's nice if you do have your CDL, just to save you some time. But yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Mike, quick question. You have mentioned that some people don't want you on the property and they don't want the lead lines replaced. Is there a waiver form that residents are allowed to sign to say don't want it?
There is. Eagle still wants you to try to get them done. Just do full, as much as you can. But yeah, there is a waiver.
They can opt out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Director Dennis? Okay, thank you Director.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Next is the consent agenda items, Trevor Kavanaugh.
Thank you Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows, the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11th of 2024, the warrant listed bills as of June 21st of 2024, in the total amount of $1,571,830.77. The reappointment of Elizabeth Lipak and Felicia Thomas to the Library Board with four-year terms, ending 6/30 of 2028. Advertisement for Bids, Department of Public Services, Water Department Lead Service Line Investigation and Verification Project. Advertisement for Bids, Department of Public Services, Water Department Cross-Connection Control Program. Advertisement for Bids for a request for qualifications, the RFQ, Central RTB, and Collector Sewer Professional Engineering Services.
Support.
Move and support, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next up is the memorandum of understanding, and that will be Director Washington.
Good evening again, Honorable Board. I'm here today to present to you for your approval, the IAFF Staffing MOU. This MOU will allow the management to staff the Fire Department Suppression Services and Paramedic Services in the event of, they fail to have the correct manpower available. And so, I've submitted the actual MOU to the board for your review, and inside the MOU, we've discussed the parameters of how that's going to work. I'm here available for any questions you may have.
Everybody got a copy of any questions from the board? There was much discussion, we made sure that there is an out clause for both sides after a 30-day out. This is, you know, also is going to be an expression of the Chief, and my understanding the Union has looked at this and approved their, their thoughts on the contract, or the MOU. So, I, if we continue to try to find ways to keep our people here and make sure our residents stay safe as we continue to look for more firefighters, this is something that we agreed with, that we thought would be a good idea, try to hopefully get more, more firefighters, with some, some more overtime, and they are working a lot, so, trying to make sure that nobody gets burnt out, and this we think will help as we continue to look. So, questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the IAFF for Redford Township Fire Department Union Critical Staffing Pay to Assist Management in Maintaining Staffing at Needed Levels.
Support.
The move is supported, supported, the motion is approved, the memorandum of understanding with the IAFF for the Redford Township Fire Department Union Critical Staffing Pay to Assist Management in Managing, Management in Maintaining Staffing in a Need, Needed Levels. Any other discussion? Hearing unroll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. McCray? Yes, motion passes. Next we have Director Washington.
Thank you very much Supervisor McCray. The next agenda item is, I'm asking for the concurrence, myself and Chief Mansfield is here, if there are any questions, but I, we're asking for concurrence of the entry-level police officer minimum qualification. This is the first part of a two-part process. I'm coming to you this evening with the minimum qualification for police officer, and the Chief and I were working on developing a job description, and once the Police and Fire Commission has approved that, I'll bring it to the board for your concurrence, but that'll be done at a later date. On June 13th, the Police and Fire Commission approved these minimum qualifications, and that's why I'm asking for your concurrence right now, so we can use that to assist us in finding qualified police officers.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Director Washington, can you tell me what's changed from the original?
Yes. In the past, the Police Department has used the MCOS qualifications, and there are about 20 qualifications, this is going to fine-tune the qualifications. Ultimately, anybody the Police Department chooses will have to meet those MCOS qualifications, but this way, it will fine-tune and improve the quality of the candidates that we bring to Redford Township. For your review, if you like, I have a list of the qualifications that I can pass out.
So, is it, so nothing's changed regarding the requirement of education or the age to apply, all of that still remains the same, or just adding an additional layer on top of what MCOS is already required?
No, MCOS is a little bit more lax in what they allow, I don't want to say, probably lax is the wrong word, however, their, their qualifications are a little bit more broader than what ours will be.
Trustee Kavanaugh, please.
The MCOS requirements that...
Please go to Mike, thanks.
Sorry, I thought it was loud enough for it to actually reach the microphone.
Well, everybody thinks that.
The MCOS requirements, as I realize, Director Washington pointing them out...
Thank you.
Some of the main ones is that they have to be 18 years of age, and only require a GED.
Oh.
As society as a whole, as well as your board and myself, are really demanding of a more professional law enforcement and Police Department police officers, what I've requested of Director Washington and the Civil Service Commission is to approve some greater qualifications, but also provide multiple pathways to get to the position of police officer. I've requested that our age be raised to, I put 20 and a half because of the time period it takes to actually get a background and get hired in, 20 and a half, I'd like to see 60 credit hours of college, which is actually what it was back when I hired in, there's no particular degree, just 60 hours, or three years of military service with our US Armed Forces with an honorable discharge, or four years of law enforcement experience, or also three years as a cadet with our Police Department. And what this really does, and what my goal truthfully is, is to reach out to these candidates who already have some critical thinking skills, they've already got some skills built into them on top of what I want to build, and I'm looking for that candidate who's truly dedicated to a commitment to something, preferably some sort of personal growth, but a commitment to something, because I do believe that that's what this township deserves, and I think that that's what these kind of requirements are in fact going to attract as we continue to build to a more professional, you know, law enforcement department to serve this community.
Thank you. To the Chair.
Very long.
Trevor Kavanaugh.
Just, just out of curiosity...
Yes ma'am.
How do you determine good moral character?
Generally, that has to do with their background, there are certain things in which are immediate disqualifications for licensure within a police department, with a police officer through MCOS, but there's other things that I don't want. For instance, I don't know, do you want somebody who's been convicted of solicitation as a police officer, that's not an immediate disqualifier? So, there's a lot of different things, that gives me some flexibility.
Okay.
Make sure that I'm still bringing you guys the best candidates in order to serve this township.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the Chair, one more, if there's no other.
Oh.
Chief Mansfield, do these new qualifications, I know that we're still in the process of seeking accreditation, so would these kind of be in line with becoming an accredited department requiring a higher level of candidate?
Truthfully, accreditation does not require a specific background to the officer, they, accreditation still just requires a licensure through the state of Michigan, which MCOS has. So, anything that I have asked for is something that's already, well, let me rephrase that, anything I have asked for, MCOS is already a part of that. To me, this helps build the reputation that would help us in accreditation, because I think those critical thinking skills, as well as some maturity, et cetera, are going to help us reach the other goals of accreditation, but it is not a checkbox.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing other questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve, move the approval of Police and Fire Civil Services Commission addition to the qualification of entry-level police officer classification.
Support.
Trevor Kavanaugh, the motion is approved, approval of the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission addition to the qualification of the entry-level police officer classification. Roll call vote on that.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Director Washington again.
This will be the last one tonight.
Okay.
I promise. At this point, I'm now asking for the Honorable Board to review the Deputy Clerk Employment Agreement, and to approve the requested salary for Darian Bird.
Mr. Chairman?
Or Christie?
You know, I, I agree that, you know, grade four is a step for someone in the position Deputy Clerk, and step one in this case was chosen because Mr. Bird does not have any experience as a deputy clerk, however, he has about a year as the confidential assistant in my office, he's, also has experience as a premier election chair, and he has a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, and I'd like to, you know, constructively piece all that together, and he is not a rookie, he's not a rookie, he has experience in the note-taking, in record-keeping side of the clerk's office, as well as the election side. I would like to get him up to a step two, if I can persuade the board to, to do that, so I would move to approve Director Washington's recommendation with the change that he start at step two, so he would start at grade four, step two, and that's, that's my motion.
Hearing the motion, any support?
Support.
Okay, supported by Trustee Kennedy, discussion?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor?
Director Washington, was the staff recommended based out of HR's office and your recommendation based on his experience level?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
What's the differential between a step one and a step two?
About 2,000 or so, I would assume.
Yeah, about 2,000.
Between 2 and 3,000.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
No.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
No. Okay, motion carries, great.
Ms. Christie?
Yes.
Motion carries. So, so motion will, just to clarify, the motion be approved, request a salary of grade four, step two, and the Deputy Clerk Employment Agreement exempt employee for Darian Bird. Okay?
Yep.
All right, congratulations. Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Honorable Board.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, I have Erin, she might come up, and the next is, is the, we have, let me get Ross this out, I'm sorry, we have the assessing contract with WCA, expires July 1st, we had originally been proposed with a five-year, 5% increase contract, after having conversations with our Finance Director and, and Erin, and we kind of decided that it would be in the township's best interest to go with a three-year contract at 5%, and that way we can look at where the market's at for all this stuff, three years down the road, and they have graciously agreed to that, so Erin is here to answer any questions contractually, if you have any, so I'll put it up to the board.
To the Chair.
Trevor Kavanaugh.
I just want to make a comment. I want to thank your people that are here in, in Town Hall, they are extremely respectful, helpful, and it's a tough job, but they answer all the questions, even if we have to transfer the call to them, they appreciate the fact that they can answer everybody's questions and help them as best they can, because sometimes the answers people don't want to hear, so thank you for your department.
I appreciate that, I was actually thinking about that earlier, and I know that some of our people have been here in the township for going on 18 years now.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it's pretty excellent to see that you've got such a wonderful longevity and a great amount of experience here in the township, so.
Although I ask about you all the time.
I'm still around.
Oh, that's what they call me, thank you though.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Is 5% annually standard with most contracts?
We have 41 different municipalities, every single contract has been at least 4%. Inflation for the last few years has certainly exceeded that. We negotiated the contract five years ago, and we did it five years at 3%. 3% obviously is not keeping in track with whoever at inflationary right now, we're more than happy to go on a shorter term because it's going to potentially, I don't know, we might come back in three years and say it's 7%, or we might say it's 3%, I don't know. I know that we wish it would have been greater than 3% for the last few years in our existing contract, but it is what it is, it's business, so, yes, that's very typical, I know that we've probably done two-thirds of our renewals now at 5%.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trevor Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the assessing contract with WCA assessing for the term of three years, effective July 1st, 2024, and expiring June 30th, 2027.
Support.
The move is supported, so the motion is to approve the assessing contract with WCA assessing for a term of three years, effective July 1st, 2024, and expiring June 30th, 2027. Any other discussion? Hearing unroll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Erin.
Mr. Dennis, I think you're up again.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, thank you again. In front of you is a request from GFL, as many of you know, there is a transaction going on between GFL Environmental USA, which is being sold on their residential contracts to Priority Waste LLC out of Clinton Township. I also want to let you know in case there are some questions for Priority Waste, Paul Ruthenberg, who is their account manager, there he is, sorry, he's behind me, is here to answer any questions as well. So, as of next Monday, July 1st, Priority Waste will be our new solid waste carrier, they are acquiring GFL for all of our services, that would be for solid waste, recycle, and compost. That would be for solid waste, recycle, and compost. They're assuming the contract. We did check with our township lawyers. We had a meeting just last week with Paul and their staff, and there were no problems that it is in a contract that it can be transferred to a different holder. They have assured us that we are going to get good service, if not better service. There was a handout that Paul did share with us in regards to some of their improved services. One of them was that there is a call time of about a minute and 17 seconds compared to an hour and 17 minutes on GFL. And I'm not trying to badmouth GFL. They've had some hard times. And currently with the transition, they're still trying, they're finishing up this week. They actually worked on Sunday just to finish up. I wonder what was on my street. My wife goes GFL, and I went, what? So they're picking up compost, they're just checking streets. But so there is a PowerPoint that was shared with you, Priority Waste, and I'm going to give Paul a quick minute to talk here about their company to you. But there was a nice handout that they did share with us, talking about their call times. One of the big things that I did like was they have cameras on their trucks. So if we have Mrs. Jones who calls us and says, you didn't pick up my garbage, you missed me, they can actually check to see if Mrs. Jones, not that we don't want to help on Mrs. Jones. Hopefully there's no Mrs. Jones out here, by the way. That maybe she didn't have it out there. Well, they go back, pick it up probably, but it's, you know, it got missed because, you know, for example, they thought that there was a holiday last Wednesday, there was not for garbage pickup-wise. And so some folks probably missed it on Wednesday because they thought that it was one of the six holidays. So, you know, things of that nature, the technology, the call center, there was a question before the meeting that, and Paul will go to it, that you will be able to contact GFL's toll-free number in addition to Priority Waste, and it will get forwarded to Priority Waste. But I'm going to have Paul just touch base on a few features, services, et cetera, that Priority Waste will be offering our residents, as well as the 43 that you're assuming, correct?
In this area?
Yeah, in this area alone, yeah.
30.
30, so. Yes, so I'm going to let Paul, I'll chit chat with you, but thank you for that.
Good evening, Supervisor, Honorable Trustees, Honorable Board. My name is Paul Ruthenberg. I am with Priority Waste, and as Director Dennis pointed out, we did meet earlier. And I did have the PowerPoint presentation. Now, did everybody get a copy of this?
No, yes.
Okay.
It's in the EPIC.
EPIC, it's in the EPIC. Yeah, no, she can't.
Well, let's just go ahead.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have more right here if you want.
Yeah, and I won't try to keep everybody all evening long, but yes, Priority Waste has put together an acquisition with Green for Life, which is their municipal contracts. GFL will continue to operate as a commercial entity. That doesn't mean anything for Redford Township unless you happen to be a private business owner. All commercial boxes, roll-offs, whatever that Redford Township needs will be supplied through us per your contract. The intention of Priority Waste is to follow to the letter your contract. Our vision for Monday is to have the same employees, most likely the same trucks, in Redford Township that you have on Friday. I know that they've had some difficulties completing services this week, and we have been very active in making sure that they know what we need them to perform as far as finishing all the services in Redford Township. As I said, or as Director said, Priority Waste is kind of like if you imagined a tech company slamming into a garbage company. Okay, so what we have in Clinton Township is, you ever seen the DT Control Center for outages and what have you, this great big screen and all these people looking at it? That's exactly what our technology looks like in Clinton Township, and I would invite anybody to please set up a visit to Clinton Township. It's really, really cool stuff. But in essence, each truck, each driver will have a tablet mounted in his truck. We have what we call lead driver coordinators that are in Clinton Township in this huge center that has about a 90-foot screen that is throwing up anything that our lead driver coordinators, or I will refer to them as LDCs, are presently concerned with. They also have monitors in front of them. But the important part is, is the cameras. If anybody's noticed, maybe a couple months ago and more, and we actually ended up saving a lady in her home by breaking into the side window when we saw the smoke coming out of her house. Our crew went and did that. What was really kind of neat was the media used our actual footage off the trucks. And for me, an old timer, been doing this for 40 years, I was very resistant to the thought of a lead driver coordinator replacing boots on the ground, so to speak. I stand corrected, it is a better system. It is a quicker system, it is a more efficient system. So for instance, as the Director mentioned, John Smith calls in, they picked up everybody on the street but him. We then can, in real time, pull up that video of the truck and actually see if John had his garbage can out. If he did not, at that point, we will inform him and offer to send him the photo of his house with no garbage can out. And we will also offer to come back and get it. I'm sorry, I've been doing this a long time, but I've learned that residents learn better with empty containers than they do with full containers. Okay? So we do want to do that, and we want to perform our duty throughout Redford Township, but at the same time, we want to educate at the same time. The other important thing is, we have audio as well. So should a driver incorrectly speak to a resident, or vice versa, we have that audio, and we can play it back and make any corrections we need to do. So in a scenario where our trucks will leave the yard, the driver has his route and directions to that route on his tablet. He has a start here and end here as well. The driver will then perform his duties throughout the course of the day. Before he leaves Redford, or she leaves Redford Township, they will call their LDC and make sure that everything on that driver's route has been collected. Now, the big thing about that is the trucks also have GPS technology. Most garbage trucks have GPS technology. The difference is, it doesn't do you a lot of good if you're not looking at it. Okay? They use them for to check if they get a complaint. Our LDCs in Redford Township will have your dedicated lead driver coordinator. You'll also have a dedicated lead driver actually in the truck. But that is what they do. They're looking for two lines down every street because we service from the right side of the trucks. It has to go up one side and down the other. They're specifically looking for those type of issues. So when that driver, before that driver leaves Redford Township, he reports to the LDC. It takes about three minutes for the LDC to completely check out their route and release them from Redford Township. Coupled with that, we will obviously have a, on our webpage, prioritywaste.com, we will have a drop-down menu for residents of Redford Township to, if you do not want to call. You can form any concerns, questions on that drop-down menu, order cans, whatever you want. There's also a little chat button there if you'd like to talk to somebody, like everybody has these days. But Todd Stamper, our CEO, is really big on efficiency, and that carries over too when a resident has to make a call. As Director Dennis mentioned, as of last week, our average call time was a minute and 17 seconds. The average time to get to an LDC, in other words, you call Priority Waste, a real live person picks up, says, how can I help you? You say I'm from Redford Township. You go over to the lead driver coordinator for Redford Township. That takes 15 seconds. So it's much better for the residents when they know they can make a call and get off the phone reasonably quickly. And that's what Priority's been built on. And again, I've been doing this for 40 years. This is an extremely efficient model. I have never thought, we were talking before the meeting, where garbage companies used to come in and they put it up for bid, and the low bid would come in and say, we'll be better. And you say, well, why? Well, because we have green trucks. No, it's people picking up and moving garbage, or machines. It's very simple. But what we've attacked is, let's make sure that driver's doing that. I'm an old driver, trust me, they have a million excuses. They're very well-trained in that. So we want to make sure that Redford Township is getting exactly what they're paying for. Now, to be cautious, we, as of June 30th, Saturday or Sunday, GFL will complete the routes in Redford Township. As of Monday, the equipment and I would say a very good portion of the employees will become Priority Waste equipment and employees. That would, unfortunately, that would leave Redford Township with, GFL would no longer have the assets to collect anything. So it's imperative that we get the assignment so that we can provide to the township insurance and our bonding that you'll need. And that's exactly why we're here tonight.
Okay, well, I guess what I'd like to say is that after hearing different residents complain from everything, from broken garbage bags that don't get picked up, that drivers just leave them from trucks that are leaking, and they don't do anything about it, and garbage cans placement, the garbage cans, because, you know, sometimes they end up in a ditch in some of our neighborhoods, and sometimes the garbage guys, they put it in the middle of the driveway. So that means residents, when they get ready to pull it, they've got to stop, get out, move the garbage can, because that isn't where they had to be picked up. So, you know, in our conversation, we had a meeting, we talked about these things, and these are things that come up pretty regular for all of our residents, in one fashion or another. With the camera system, we'll be able to watch that, and corrections will be made, so it should mean less calls to them because you have a problem, because they're supposedly watching all the time to make sure that we get the best service possible. So I think this is a good thing for us, and we have the contract, it's not costing us any more money, we're just going to fulfill the contract. We'll have time to see how it all goes before it's time to renew a contract or what we're going to do next, right? So I feel pretty confident. I think, you know, when I saw the control center, I thought it was, you know, a NASA or something, they got all these cameras up, and they got, you know, screens up, you know, and I think it's good, it'll be good for everybody, so.
And one thing, Supervisor, to your point, every Tuesday morning, around 5:00 in the morning, we have a safety meeting in our yard with all the drivers and loaders. One of the features is what we call the Walk of Shame, is where we take the video of a driver putting a can in the middle of a driveway, a loader throwing a compost can away, and we put those all on display for everyone to see, and basically, in a friendly way, make fun of them, but it does make them accountable because we're showing everybody what we don't like. So it's a really good experience for everybody to see at once on video. We do not like this.
Right. Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Kennedy?
So these trucks would be equipped with like brooms and shuttles to pick up all that?
And the cameras to make sure they do it.
Because I know on GFL, we've had garbage all in the middle of the road, and...
Yeah, that's not good.
Okay, other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson?
When does this contract end?
Three years.
Three years.
It'll end June 30th, 2027.
And just from a historical standpoint, is your pricing comparable to what GFL's is, or?
Absolutely. But the pricing that we'll be honoring is the pricing that's held within the contract, GFL's contract, which will be assigned over to us. So we will be honoring the pricing.
I know you will for the next three years, but I'm just curious, if, you know, you look at your pricing versus GFL pricing, is that pricing comparable?
When we did the bid in 2022, Priority Waste was second behind GFL. It was not large, it was right afterwards. It's probably, I think this contract was 3.2 years or probably 3.4 million, some of that nature. It was pretty close.
To the Chair.
Finance Director? What I think may be interesting to Trustee Jackson's point is that the contract we signed with GFL was five years with possible extensions as guaranteed pricing. I wouldn't be surprised if Priority doesn't want to do those extended years at that lower pricing.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King?
Mr. Ruthenberg, now, since we have you here.
Hello.
Any municipalities that your company services that rake the leaves just to the curb and they collect it?
I can tell you that we will be servicing Lubonia, and they do that. It's called bulk leaf collection. Westland brought it back last year. I do not know what the status is going to be for that this year. And to my knowledge, I believe, we service the city of Plymouth, they do that. But I think that's about it right now.
What's your feelings on that service? I mean, I assume they're pretty happy with it.
Yes and no. You know, my experience, and Supervisor, Trustee, you're asking me a direct question, and I've got a lot of experience in it. I think it's a great program if the residents actually understand and are told when they should expect that program to be on their street, and understanding, that's a moving target, depending on how many trees you have on your street. But for instance, I've seen it done in Lubonia where they post at the beginning of the streets, your leaf pickup will be next week. That helps a lot because as an old garbage truck driver, one thing that really drove me nuts is when we went down the street picking up the garbage, and you saw the resident three homes back just putting their garbage out. Okay? The same thing can happen with the bulk leaf program, is you go down the street on Monday, the resident has the time to rake those leaves on Thursday, and then they want to know when you're going to come back. But one thing that's a feature of bulk collection everywhere is residents still has the option to put it in bags or cans. That's still available to them. But I do find it's extremely helpful when it comes to some of our senior residents and some of our disabled residents. It really does help. It's just much easier to handle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
Other questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor?
I move that we approve the agreement transfer of GFL Environmental USA effective July 1st, 2024. Support.
Support, movement is supported. The motion is to approve approval of GFL Environmental USA corporate agreement transfer effective July 1st, 2024. Are there any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board, we're really excited. We look forward to it.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board. Good evening. The next two items before you both relate to the water, sewer, and CSO budgets. The first one is the resolution setting the water, sewer, and CSO rates effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. As we discussed during the study session at length, we did see both some increases and decreases in what is going on. So the actual rate that we're being charged for a unit of water is actually going to go down, but the amount that we're being charged for sewer usage is going to go up. And so water is going down 8 cents per unit, sewer is going up 9 cents per unit, and the CSO capital rate and operations rate together is going to go up 77 cents per unit. And that is all related, of course, primarily to the work that is being done as required by Eagle for the CSO central basin, and as we take on the requirements for the debt service related to the construction of that basin. So we will see a net increase on the ratable side of the water and sewer bills of about 7% of an increase. However, we will see a decrease... However, we will see a decrease in the base fee that we are assigning, which is the fixed rate that is levied towards every home with the adoption of the, what we discussed during the meeting, of moving to having the base fee and a service line fee. So what does that mean for our residents? What that means is that when I look at the five-year average of what has happened over the last five years, we we are seeing, as I said, a 7.3% increase in the ratable side, but we have managed to average 3.6% a year over the last five years. And we've managed to average a 2.25% increase on the base fee side. For the majority of our homes who have a 5/8 inch service line, if they have an average water bill that is five units or less, they're actually going to see a slight decrease in their water bill, not an increase, it's going to actually go down. For those who use an average of 10 units or more, their bill is going to go up by a few dollars. So like someone using 10 units of water per billing cycle, it's going to go up by $3.53. So all told, I think for our residents, a good majority of them are gonna actually see their bills go down slightly, some of them will see them go up slightly, but this is what we're doing to try to be as equitable as we can to all as we take on the burden of that construction of the CSO central basin.
Questions from the board? I will say that we had a very good study session at 530 about this very issue. And Director Bonnerack was very good at explaining all of this in detail, so we, I think we have a good plan. And I thank you for putting this together, you and your staff. So questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the resolution setting to July 1st, 2024, water, sewer, and CSO rates.
Support.
Supported by trustee Jackson, as a motion is to approve, for approval of the resolution setting to July 1st, 2024, water, sewer, and CSO rates. Any discussion?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Just a quick question. I know we didn't touch on, I know that previous superintendents and directors have always tried to find where they can contain the loss. Has there been any, I guess, any activity in 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 coming to less of a loss? Can we actually report, I mean, that we have to report?
So I, you know, that's a great question, Treasurer Kavanaugh, and so we're currently projecting at around a 12% loss, which is about average, right? A good, a community that is doing really good at water loss is probably at 9 or 10%. Communities that are doing really bad at water loss are 15, 18, 20% water loss. One of the big drivers of water loss for us, of course, is water main breaks. And as you know, we had two years worth of water main breaks in one year, as Director Dennis shared earlier this evening, and I think that has certainly contributed to why we're at 12% right now. There is equipment that the water and sewer departments have purchased that allows them to use cameras and footage to look and identify areas that should be prime targets for repairs and replacement, specifically for that purpose.
Okay.
So I think that they are being very proactive at it. Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Mike has a comment. He thought he was done.
Tried to give a good answer.
I just wanted to add real quick that we are due in about a year for a water reliability study, which does listen to, goes through the entire community that's doing it, probably about a year or so. So so that will assist us as well. I just want to bring it up, we are about a year from now.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion on the floor to be seconded. For Christie, roll call vote please.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. King. Mr. McCray.
Yes, motion carries.
Director Bonnerack.
Thank you, sir. So then the second item is the actual Fund 592 Water and Sewer Fund itself. We also discussed this and reviewed it earlier. So even though our water rates are sent on July 1st, the budget is still effective back from April 1st. And no real changes to the budget, other, no staffing changes, no real changes to our projected capital plan, other than the inclusion of things like the $1 million grant from Congresswoman Talib's office for lead line remediation, the addition of the debt service related to the CSO central basin. But other than that, it's very much a status quo budget year over year.
Questions from the board? Bonnerack, you must have a really great job. Always. Hearing all questions from the board, what is the board's pleasure?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the recommended fiscal year 2025 budget for Fund 592 Water and Sewer Fund.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh, the motion is to approve, for approval of the recommended fiscal year 2025 budget for Fund 592 Water and Sewer Fund. Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis.
Yo.
Okay.
He's got too much energy.
Yep.
Get a lot of exercise, get my stuff sitting back there. I know. So. Okay, go ahead. This shoot by the board. Sorry, trying to be funny. No, it's all right. Tricked me Coca-Cola back there.
That's not good.
We're not number. I just had a lot of stuff. I apologize. All right, in in front of you is a is a memo asking for approval of the demolition of seven current trailer structures at the Plymouth Mobile Home Court on Plymouth Road. The building department has obtained orders to abate for seven current trailers that are vacant, and we have obtained bids and we did a walkthrough, and we did obtain a bid from Universal Consolidated Enterprises from Rochester, Michigan, an amount of $29,310. The funding from this, for this project will come from the ordinance enforcement fund to pay for the $29,310. I am hoping to have this project started ASAP. So I've already spoken with contractor, like to have them on site within the next two weeks if possible.
Okay, that's that's the earliest we can get them out there, it's in two weeks.
Well, it's a holiday next week, so, yeah.
I know, well.
I left a.
Having those tore down will be a holiday for all the residents.
I've already written the contract, so I'm waiting for them to show up.
Stay on course, stay on course.
Yes, okay. That's, if I can get it done sooner, absolutely. He takes them down right there.
Okay.
We did this two years ago and we and we took down trailers. Those trailers cannot be moved, so they get cut in place, but into a dumpster and hauled up.
Yep. So questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Let she come first.
Trustee Jackson.
The bids are, the high bid was more than double what the low bid was.
It is, we've done.
Any?
Yeah, sorry.
Clue as to why there's such a wide discrepancy between the bids?
Two, there was actually four bidders that we contacted that we've done work with for years, two were just too busy. I think if they got this, they would just take it. This this other company has done a lot of work for us in the past. They actually were the contractor that took down Ashcroft School. So they're a, they're a big company, they just, you know, they do work for myself or for Director Mancini, and I think they just gave us a good voice. It's probably filling work a little bit, but it's get in, get out, you know, so, but that's that's probably the big difference. They're all very big companies, do a lot of work, they've worked for Redford, all these companies have worked for Redford for probably 20 years.
So $29,000 was basically a gift?
I'm not, that I don't know, but.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the Chair. I move to approve the bid recommendation for demolition of properties to Universal Consolidated Enterprises Inc., Rochester, Michigan, 48308 for the removal of seven trailer structures in the total amount of $29,310 from GL number 103, 37202-956000, ordinance enforcement fund miscellaneous. Support.
Movement supported. So the motion is to approve, for approval of the bid recommendation for demolition of properties to Universal Consolidated Enterprises Incorporated, Rochester, Michigan, 48308 for the removal of seven trailer structures in the total amount of $29,310. Funds coming from GL 103, 37202-956000, ordinance enforcement fund miscellaneous. Any other questions?
To the Chair.
Mike, are they going to clean up the rest of that site? Because there's so much trash laying around in there. Is the city or the township going after residents and that?
Yes, yes, man, we are. There is, there was an email sent out yesterday to the board that.
Update.
Yeah, stated, stated all this, we have a full attack going on, I guess you can say, from a lot of different layers, abatements, occupancy, blight, you name it, it is, there's all different fronts working for. We are on site every day.
Own the poor.
It's what, it's very hard when the owner lives 2,500 miles away and doesn't care.
Yeah.
And so that's what we're dealing with, and we have taken a very hard stand, we're trying to work with them, but it's it's not working, and so we're doing what we gotta do now.
I know there's some stray cats, a nest of them in that park. And I know a couple neighbors, they bike ride over there and leave food and.
Feral cats are not, might not be a problem in that neighborhood, though, to help out the trailer park.
Oh, true, get rid of the rats and stuff, definitely that.
So that might be helping us.
But she's been, there's one neighbor on our neighborhood that goes over, beams up, she took one of them then. But yeah, that's one I think, and they do keep the rats down.
Yes, we we have multiple citations rolling right now, abatements that are ongoing, that are in the court system, and a few other things that we're working on as we speak.
Great.
There's a motion on the floor to be seconded, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Director Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, in front of you is a memo asking for a bid recommendation for a project we're working on in North CSO Basin, myself, Tom Rowland and our staff, and we're working together with Wade Trim to do a sort of another phase of the North CSO improvements. Recently, we have mostly completed a pump upgrade with a SCADA software system that the, that talks to different facilities of the county. And this is now taking a few more steps in regards to drains, electrical, things of that nature. We have a set budget, which again, thank you for approving our budget, that we are using for this project itself. We did go out the bid, we had a hard time getting contractors, I don't know what it is, contractors were busy. We did do a walkthrough and we did receive two quotes for upgrades, miscellaneous improvements over there, and we are asking that the board to please approve the bid for Midwest Power Systems Inc. in Milford, an amount of $533,391. I am also asking that if the board would please to also approve the construction engineering inspections and oversight related costs to this project by itself, an amount of not to exceed $90,000 to Wade Trim, as they will be overseeing this project on behalf of Redford Township. And this would also be paid out of GL 592, I see I missed some numbers here, I apologize. But it'd be paid out of North CSO Basin miscellaneous repairs and maintenance.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Mike, have we gotten any further with Wayne County doing oversight with the CSO? I think there was talk about them no longer wanting to be, to oversee the CSO and maintenance stuff.
They just kicked that around. I think it's something that's a standing joke between their director and myself. Every time I see him, that's his opening line to me. But will they eventually get, yes, but we've kind of sort of decided, once we get through with the central CSO, we'll have two or three done, and then we can probably start looking into doing an operations contract, going to get in the third, and then it would just be run all three of our, yes. It does make that if we're gonna make changes, 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 not know what we're doing, at least if we're close to getting the second one done, the county knows where we are at, and I think they would be very open, you know, continuing until we finish the third.
I hope so, thank you.
No problem.
Other questions from the board? Erianna, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of bid recommendation DPS Water Department, North CSO Basin Miscellaneous Improvements Project to be awarded to Midwest Power Systems Incorporated in Milford, Michigan, in the amount of $533,391. In addition, approval for construction engineering inspection and oversight related costs to this project as provided by Wade Trim Incorporated, any amount not to exceed $90,000. Funds to be allocated from GL 103, 37202-956000.
Support.
I've dealt with it, I'm sorry.
I think it's wrong GL number.
I, well, I have a 592 number on.
That's what I have.
Yeah, I don't know where.
I thought you said it was the same as the other number, but you were missing.
No, no, my memo, I'm missing a couple of numbers here, but it's, I don't know why I am, I apologize, but no, it's the same, it's 592, which is water, but I just don't have the last.
It's 54600.
Zero, and then nine, I think it's 974002.
Okay.
What?
I just know on top of my head.
Well, I'm telling you whatever, I'm looking at your memo.
Chair, we approve budgets at a departmental level, so all that's ever really needed for this is to simply say to be paid for from Fund 592.
I'm gonna change my memos from now on, I like it, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You know what? So there's a motion, okay, there's a motion on the floor to be seconded.
Support.
So lots of support, okay. So the motion is, is to approve the bid recommendation DPS Water Department, North CSO Basin Miscellaneous Improvements Project to be awarded to Midwest Power System Incorporated, Milford, Michigan, 4830, 380, in the amount of $533,391. In addition, approval of construction engineering inspections and oversight related costs to the project as provided by Wayne Trim Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $90,000, funding to come out of GL 592, North CSO Basin Miscellaneous Repairs and Maintenance. Or any other discussion? Erianna, roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Dennis, last but not least.
Yes, sir. In front of you is a memo asking for recommendation for a water main project that will be located at Five Mile in Bell Creek, going through Bell Creek Park. This is related to the Bell, excuse me, the Five Mile Bridge Replacement Project that was supposed to be starting next week. We have a water main that goes probably, I don't know, 100 feet north of the roadway. The county felt as though it was too close when they were gonna be replacing a bridge, and so they wanted us to move it further north for safety factors, and they're, that's one reason why you saw the gas main of all the work down at at the bridge on the south side going across, because they had to move the gas line because of the bridge. So in, so we had to go out the bid and we did a bid, a bid package. We did receive approximately four bids back from companies, and we are recommending the contribution.
the contract be awarded to Diversified Excavating and Site Utilities out of Ypsilanti, Michigan, in the amount of $276,252. I am also again asking that the board to approve, to request approval for construction engineering inspections and oversight related costs to this project from Wade Trim, the amount not to exceed $40,000. Funding for this project will come from Fund 592, Water and Sewer Capital Improvements.
Questions from the board? Eileen, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the bid recommendation for the DPS Water Department, Water Main Replacement Project on Five Mile Road, Bell Creek Park, in the amount of $276,252, to be awarded to Diversified Excavating and Site Utilities LLC in Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48198. In addition, approval for construction engineering inspections and oversight related costs to this project as provided by Wade Trim Associates, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $40,000 from the Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Water Main Replacement Fund 592.
Support.
Movement supported. So the motion on the floor is approved. Approval of the bid recommendation DPS Water Department, Water Main Replacement Project on Five Mile Road, Bell Creek Park, in the amount of $276,500, $252, awarded to Diversified Excavating and Sites Utilities LLC, Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48198. In additional, the approval of construction engineering inspection and oversight related costs to the project as provided by Wade Trim Associates Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $40,000. Funds will be allocated from GL 592, Water and Sewer Capital Improvements, Water Main Replacement. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Announcements from the board?
My, the deputy clerk has an announcement to call in.
All right. Thank you so much. Couple things. So we know that the election's coming up. August 6th is the primary, November 5th will be the general. So we are looking for election inspectors. So those in the audience or at home, if you'd like to become an election inspector, it's really simple, just come on down to the clerk's office. Right now, we're actually working with the marketing team to be able to put this online so that it's as easy as you filling it out, filling out your W4 information, and it's automatically being sent to the people upstairs so that you don't have to actually come in. And so it's at the convenience of your home. A couple other things. We have early voting. That's gonna be nine days prior to the election, so come on and vote early. We definitely encourage that for the people who are gonna be moving precincts, and I'll get to that right now. If you don't remember where you're gonna be at, just come into Town Hall. That's where the early voting is. So if you're at Precinct 6, which is Hilbert, you'll be moved to Our Lady of Loretto. Precincts 12, 13, and 14, so that's World Peace Outreach, Pierce, and Fisher. If you're at any of those three, you'll be at Thurston High School this coming election. And then 15 and 16, which consists of Jefferson and Vandenberg, you'll be at Adams Elementary. So again, if you would like to just vote early, just come on down to Town Hall. And then you also have the option of absentee voting as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
On behalf of Cares in Farmington Hills, they have a Duck Race fundraiser on August 7th. There are various levels of sponsorship from $250 to $10,000. And you can also buy individual quacks from $5 to $100. And I would like to request that the board sponsor a 28 quack, quack maximum of $100, which would be about $15 each, and that would be on behalf of the Redford Township Board. They are located in Farmington Hills, but they service families also in the Redford Township area.
Are you collecting tonight?
I can. I absolutely can.
Any other announcements?
When do you need it, bud?
The only thing that I want to make sure we say is, is Mr. Dennis already was up here talking about the festival. It was a great festival. The police department did a great job keeping us all safe while things are going on. Festival workers were awesome. It was one of the better festivals we've had, weather-wise, and people that were there. People were there, seemed to be there to have fun with their families, which is real pleasant